Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. Meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Hi, Mayor, Council. I don't have any additions or corrections for you.
Move to adopt. You approve.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Pat. Approve the agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You say nay. Motion carries. Invitation, Oak Heights Covenant Church. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for this. I'm Steve Larson, Pastor of Oak Heights Covenant Church. I will start my time just recognizing, as an active member of the Hutchinson Ecumenical Ministerial Association, I want to thank the city of Hutchinson for your openness and support of the various expressions of faith to come and share this prayer. The church family at Oak Heights Covenant Church upholds the city, our city leaders and our staff in our regular prayers that we uphold you today. Let us pray. Creator God, this evening I give thanks for your provision of wisdom to light our paths in life. In this season of fall, when the landscape is coming alive with colors and the bounty of harvest stands ready, we pray for your clarity in all decisions and discussions this evening. As the summer rains this year have blessed us with much-needed moisture, let your wisdom flow through this room. Now bless each one of the council members as they carry out their work. Pray for Chad, for Dave, for Patrick, for Tim, and Mayor Gary. May they graciously listen to each item before them today and make clear decisions that will continue to assist this community in its growth. And as we give, as they give their time to the city and for this work before them, may you bless them and their families in special ways in this season. As we left up this prayer this evening, we also pray for unity in our country. We pray for Hutchinson, that it will continue to be a city where families make their homes, where children can learn and play and grow in safety, where people, whatever age or stage of life they're in, can find care and compassion, and where all people thrive. May our city leaders have a sense of satisfaction in the work that will be accomplished this evening when they leave here tonight. We pray this in thy gracious name. Amen.
Next, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Connection of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything? All right, we do have a couple resolutions underneath there. We have Resolution Number One, five, six, one, six. Resolution accepting five hundred dollar donations from the Walter and Lynn Clay for the police department, future equipment purchases. And we have Resolution Number One, five, nine, one, seven. Resolution accepting donations from Joyce Halsprung. And that's for varieties of daylilies to the parks department.
Motion to approve both one-five-nine-one-six and one-five-nine-one-seven. Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim, to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You say nay. Motion carries. Public comment, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Approval of minutes. We have the budget workshop of September nine. Have the budget workshop of September ninth, two thousand twenty-five, and the regular meeting minutes of September ninth, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Chad, to approve those minutes as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda. This will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is approval of spooky sprint event on October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. B is approval of recycled aggregate crushing service with Intech Corporation. C is approval of purchase of a wheel loader from the Titan Machinery for creekside soils. D is approval of the two thousand twenty-five strategic plan. E is approval of Camp Craig lease agreement between the city of Hutchinson and the Civil Air Patrol. F is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Ellis Stalmer Club on July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-six, at the McCloud County Fairgrounds. G is approval of Resolution Number One, five, nine, one, three. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of final plat for the high bar builders addition with favorable planning commission recommendation. H is approval of Resolution Number One, five, nine, one, four. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of conditional use permit for the commercial testing of recreational cannabis products and extraction of or dentative compound in course of testing in a one-C zone district located at five forty-third Avenue Northwest with favorable planning commission recommendation. I is approval of Resolution Number One, five, nine, one, five. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of site plan review for the twenty-unit memory care facility located at nine-five-five Gulf Course Road Northwest with favorable planning commission recommendations. And J is claims appropriations and contract payments, register A. Anything anybody wants pulled off?
Make motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by Dave, to approve as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda two. Myself and Chad has, actually, I have a check on there for my son's business, and Chad has one for his business, so he'll be abstaining from the vote.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Pat, to approve with myself and Chad abstaining from the vote. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You say nay. Motion carries. Communication request petition, discussion on use of statewide affordable housing aid money.
Mayor, Council had this on the agenda for discussion tonight. You may recall, back in two thousand twenty-three, there was state legislation that was passed that provided local governments with funding to assist with the affordable housing options within the community. Through, which will be through the end of this year, the city will have received just under a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in that affordable housing aid. And we have another payment that's expected in two thousand twenty-six, that'll be just under thirty thousand. I think right now we're unsure if that's going to continue after the two thousand twenty-six session, or two thousand twenty-six funding, but there is the possibility that that will continue. We do have some reporting requirements that begin this year, actually by December first, of needing to report what is that money going to be getting used to be spent on. And so, it's something that we've just kind of sat on as we discussed housing last year through our strategic planning process. There was some conversations through the HRA. We did receive a request from Habitat for Humanity. And we're kind of sitting here with this idea of what are we going to do with this money? So you've got one request from Habitat, you've got another request from the HRA. It's not something we've gone out and solicited for, there's no requirement for us to do that, but it's really wanting to bring this in front of the council to go, okay, what is our desire with this money to see, you know, what do we want to see it spent on? Because we do need to start kind of going through a process of assigning those funds so we can report that. They don't have to be spent by December first, but we do have to be able to document to the state that this is what they've been assigned for use of. And so really, it's kind of opened up to the council for, like I said, we've included in your packet was the request from the HRA along the request from Habitat, and I see that both do have representatives here if you would happen to ask, need to ask them any questions, but because it's really open for the council for discussion on this.
First of all, thanks to our city administrator and to Judy at HUD, or HRA, for answering a lot of questions. I've been calling bankers, developers this past week since seeing this, asking a lot of questions. First question they ask is what do you consider affordable? Which makes it difficult. As one developer said, we could build two hundred thousand dollar homes all day, but nobody's in the market for the two hundred thousand dollar home. And he said, so what is considered affordable housing? He said, they're just not selling. We talked about little homes, but there's some barriers into that. And the barriers are is if you sell that mortgage, they're not saleable. There's some things in the insurance industry that are holding it back. So the one thing, and I've talked to Judy about it at the HRA, is several made a discussion point about using some of the homes, and he said you could, they could pilot it, where you took, to help people get into some of the homes was a five thousand dollar or six thousand dollar buy down of their interest rate. And he said that will help first-time homeowners because you can buy down the interest rate. He said it could be a fluid, so they have a five-year grant slash payback program with zero interest. That money would continue to get rotated through, so once it was paid back, it would go to a new house. And if you start looking at five thousand dollars, six thousand dollar down payment on a lower-cost house, we could be talking a point or a half point in interest, which will make it more affordable. We're talking a two thousand dollar payment going down to a seventeen hundred dollar payment, which is quite dramatic if you think about it. So I forward that information. We've had a discussion with Judy. She is actually attending some roundtables coming up here. And thank you for writing those down and to be able to ask people, because the best way we can do this is use other people's brains and use other people's ideas. Some of them said, you know what, you're building too many parks into new developments. You have parks all over the city. You've kind of made it a standard for developers, which makes that more expensive to do. So there were a lot of ideas floated around, but I think the one with the buy down of the interest rate was actually one of the better ideas, and that came from several people. So I'll leave it at that.
Tim, I do want to, I guess, maybe point of clarification. The lot does state what's affordable.
Yes.
In that, and you know, that's included in the, in the, you know, when it's homeownership projects, a hundred and fifteen percent of the greater state or area median income as determined by HUD, and then when it's rental, it's eighty percent. So I get the general term what's affordable, but in regards to this legislation, that is defined on what the state considers to be affordable.
And that was the first thing Judy brought up, which I was thankful for. And we would stay within those standards, which we would have to, to be able to use that funding. But once again, it comes down to her asking the questions of her peers and colleagues to see if anybody else is doing it, and is it working in their, in their community.
Well, I might be a little biased here, but since I'm on the HRA, I know that we kind of spread it out, so it's a wide, wide variety of people that we help out. So, I mean, that's, you know, we do have a couple things in town now. It's called Live and Work in Hutch, and that's where people that are getting into a house and they can get a loan from HRA, so there's fixed up loans, you know, so.
Some of the barriers we might have is just getting the information out to Realtors who can pass that along to homeowners.
That's been a discussion ever since I've been on HRA.
I can imagine it has been.
You know, that's the whole problem of anything that the council does, is to get the information out to the public. And there's a lot of, lot of programs out there that people don't, you know, don't get, so.
The bottom line is, all these people I talked to, it was like, right now, we're in such a financial situation here. Like one of them said, I don't know if my kids will ever be able to buy a home. And that's sad to hear. And he said, we've put so much debt on our country, and we've put so much debt on people, that how, everything, the interest rate, everything is so high, how are we going to get that to where, and it's scary, because I have kids, but thankfully, they figured out how to get themselves into homes by not incurring debt at a younger age. But there's still hurdles that we have to be able to assist with, and those were the ideas that came out. So I hope that passing those along, even the HRA looking into it, and it could be a pilot program, where you just start with five, and see if it, the functionality of it, but you're right, communication's always been the key.
You discussed before one time, Tim, we had a discussion about reaching out to veterans to get them to come to town, to get them in a house and get them employment in town, because we definitely need workers, so, you know.
And it's worked. I mean, you know it's worked. I think over the last ten years, we've brought twenty-two veterans who actually bought homes into this community. And yes, we could, we could push that over here. We've got a lot of veterans out there looking for employment. I get asked daily about it, and they're skilled. We just have to find a way to open the door to be able to assist them to get in. And I just had a talk with one of our congressmen the other night, because they're worried about veteran suicide and this, and I said, you spend billions of dollars to stop veteran suicide, and ten years ago we had twenty-two a day, and today we have twenty-two a day. Billions of dollars are gone. Why don't you invest in them, in their transition program and help them with housing and help them with, you know, insurance and things that they, most of them don't even understand medical insurance. They, they get sick, they go to a doctor right there on post, and they don't get a bill for it. So, and they're bringing families out. I have two sons who served in the military. Both of them are, do daycare. That's what their spouses do. We're looking for daycare. That's what they do when they're in the military, because they have short-term jobs. They get to a post and they become daycare providers because it's, they're moving constantly, and it's an easy thing to open up and start. So yes, we need to have those discussions. So I'll leave it at that, because it could be really a long conversation if we got into it. But yes, you're right.
Maybe just for the public that's watching on TV or in attendance, you know, what's been requested so far today does, the HRA has asked for use of all those funds to help with four programs. That's the Emergency Home Repair Grant, the Home Accessibility Grant, the City Home Repair Grant, and the Live Work First-Tent Home Buyer Rehab Grant. Then we had a request from Habitat for Humanity for eighty thousand to help with the construction of a new home. So that's kind of what's in front of us. I know both those groups would meet the qualifications under the statute. So, like I said, that's what's been sent as formal requests. There's other opportunities. I just don't completely know what those were.
Are you looking for a motion today, or are you?
No, I'm looking for some direction, because we would want to put it in a resolution so we have that documented. So there would be, there would be an action at a future, at a future meeting date, and so.
I think most of us agree those programs have been successful. Probably underused, but are good programs. Even Crow River, although Habitat for Humanity has been beneficial to the community, I would see nothing that would hold me back from saying that would be the direction we continue to head, especially since we have an HRA, people who are experts on this, or at least have skin in the game on this, in that recommendation. But I would also, if, if our HRA director comes back with other ideas, I'd love to be exposed to them too, and see, and leave it up to HRA to make some of those decisions.
So if we have to act on something by December, have a plan, can we just look forward into the next meeting or so and look at both these options?
Yeah.
Dividing that up between them?
Yeah, there's no action. I think, Andy, what we only technically have to have a report on is the money, is that's what, three years?
First years.
First years of money. So I think technically by December first, we only have to allocate, like, sixty-six thousand or sixty-eight thousand. So there's not a rush, but we are getting the point now where it's just sitting there for us, and, you know, what are the...
I guess I have a question on Habitat. It's when would they start to build on that? When would they need to know about that? Those organizations, that is.
Bailey's here, if you want to ask her directly.
Oh, there's you. I'm always game to hear it right from the person who's in charge of it.
Yes, please.
State your name, please.
My name is Bailey Schluter. I've been a resident of Hutchinson for about eight years, and the director of Habitat for almost four. Happy to answer any of your questions.
Have you, were you wondering, Tim, when you're looking at the next construction of a home, or are you trying to line up the financing first, or at least a portion of it?
Yeah, we have a remodel of a home that, in Hutchinson, that's going to be our next project. We have the financing for it, but with the uncertainty of the market right now, and the uncertainty of, of construction costs, having that cushion would be incredibly beneficial. And if we don't, if we don't spend it on our current Hutch project, then we would save it for the next one.
And that would be in Hutchinson?
Yeah. Yep. City from the Hutchinson Council would be especially earmarked for Hutchinson projects.
And I think, you know, that's something for the council to think about. If you were to give it to somebody like Habitat who was outside of just Hutchinson, I would say there's nothing wrong with earmarking it for Hutchinson projects. So that's something that you could consider. So, you know, I have two homes in my neighborhood, and they've been a nice addition.
Yeah. Yeah, we've built thirty homes in our time, and almost twenty of them have been sold on the open market to people outside of our organization. So many people across the spectrum have found them good homes to live in.
Anything else?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there a certain direction, or do you want to just put it back on for, I mean, something you want to think about, or?
The thing I like about the HRA programs is it affects more families.
Do you just want to take, take time to think about it and?
Yeah.
We're going to come back with some more information. Sure, absolutely.
I agree. I think if we lay, if it's laid out in front of us, and this is what we're looking at using the funding for, we should have no problem, you know, a resolution form of saying, if you get it out in a couple days, which we do, we get it a couple days in advance for review, it wouldn't be anything to approve it.
Right. I agree.
Or you want more specific direction, Matt?
Well, I mean, I, you know, I think that the big question is, you've got two requests here. Is there a desire to split amongst the two groups? Or are you looking just, you know, Chad being the comment of the HRA, I guess that's, or is it?
Can we get some clarification? Judy, would you come up and kind of clarify the, I know I, can you clarify this a little bit for us and say, okay, here's, here's kind of what we're looking at? Here's what we've been doing, because that'll clarify for the people in the community, too.
Judy, tell us who you are, please.
Hello, I'm Judy Fleming, the Hutchinson HRA Executive Director. I've lived in Hutchinson since I was three, and been part of housing since nineteen ninety-nine. Hutchinson HRA is a fluid organization addressing different housing issues that come up. When I first started, we were doing entry cost assistance, which is kind of similar to what Tim has been talking about, just a different financing tool, basically. Out at Rolling Meadows East, Rolling Meadows and Rolling Meadows East, one of our pride and joy projects. That's what we started with. Then the housing market changed, and we did more rehab. We've always, from the very beginning, worked as owner-occupied rehab. That's how the HRA partnered with the city from the very beginning. Currently, so we've had small cities rehab projects that we've administered, and those were all targeted to neighborhoods. The wonderful thing that happened with Andy and our new programs is this is grant programs for the whole city. It's not targeted to a neighborhood. We do have to follow income limits. There are definitely higher income limits with the current funding that we have to help a broader variety of households. We've had, of the four that we've given you, that we would like to continue the program with, we've had every one, the emergency, the accessibility, the live and work, and the regular grant program. We've had success with all of them. We've helped a variety from families to single elderly. It's, it's a, it's a, we've, we started out in one area, and then we've, we've changed it to the needs of the community.
So Judy, if we'd give you, say, all of it, eighty, just round, is there, do you know how you would break that money out into those different programs?
It's a first come, first served.
Sure.
So it's whoever the need comes in, we do first come, first served. We do, the HRA is talking about stepping up our marketing, because as you were talking about, people don't always know what we have. So next week, I'll be meeting with some marketing agencies, so.
I suppose, Andy, for us, it's just important to know exactly what those dollars go to for recording, for reporting purposes.
Right.
So.
Just what our programs are set up for.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that's, that's, I guess, one of my least concerns with both Habitat and the HRA, because that's part of their missions, is having to meet those, those requirements, so.
We might even spark up a new, a new category here coming, because I talked to Judy about the veterans to maybe get.
Well, the nice part is she wrote down every note that I, everything, and that's why I'm, right now, I'm saying, you know what, she, she could come back with some really great ideas. And, you know, we have, always get our minutes, our agenda on the Thursday before. It gives us plenty of time to ask questions. And I think moving a resolution forward based on what your suggestions are is going to benefit the majority of the, you know, a large swath of our community, no matter where they are in this whole thing. I would look at it as, I mean, you've been doing this for, I just told you a little bit ago, I have my lane, and there's people who have another lane, and they're better in the lane. Let them pass, and let them wave, and tell you what you need to do. That's where I would leave it up to the HRA to bring those recommendations, which they think is going to benefit the city, and it has. And that's where I'd like to complete that right now until we get that. I think giving it a month, or giving it time to put together would be wonderful, but like I said, we, moving forward on it shouldn't be too difficult.
Anything else for Judy? All right, so I guess we're just feel aware, bring something back in two weeks.
Yep, in two weeks, if we can't get this figured out, then we probably need to look at what we're doing, because.
I don't think there's a wrong choice here. It's, I think for the council, it's how do you want, you know, is there a desire to split that money up? Or is there a desire to have it go to one particular project or multiple different projects? So I think that's probably the thing that you just need to be thinking about. We can come prepared with a couple different options as a, as a resolution. One where, you know, you're maybe splitting it up amongst the two requests, or one, one or two that are.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just do that and bring it back for the next meeting.
Sure.
So. All right, thank you.
All right. Moving on.
Yes, man, is that the guy that you were looking for?
It helps.
Okay. Sometimes we sit here and talk, and then you go, I didn't get what I wanted.
It helps. I mean, it gives us some things for you guys to act on. You're still going to have to make that, that decision, but we can at least present some options in front of you to consider, so.
Thank you.
Under new business, Resolution Number One, five, nine, one, two. Resolution relate to the issuance of General Obligation Street Reconstruction and Improvement Bond Series twenty twenty-five A. Andy? 2025A. Andy?
Mayor of the Council, Mr. Trump. So, nothing else? I was in front of you, speaking of, I love for bids on selling bonds, so maybe we could have a bond sale and commit one up for elders to speak to that because I just wanted to quick speak to the projects. Maybe you guys noticed, we actually did have some construction suffer. It don't affect me, but Dale Street was one of the big corridors and Madison Street was the other fairly large corridor, and we had some minor options for passing, but it's still... On the left is our, our cost allocation between the two projects, just over 4.2 million in total costs. But what I'd like to show is the funding on the right. Fifty-five percent of this year's cost is paid by state debt dollars. One hundred, 1.5 million of state debt was used, which really helped to keep our costs, not our cost, but to keep our funding lower than, or at short of that, or close to that. Then we have about nine percent of our cost funded by our enterprise funds, our water, sewage, stormwater, related infrastructure for those funds that were placed within those roadway construction zones. At fifty percent of the costs are being repaid by assessments. Most of those will be repaid over a ten-year term. Some homeowners choose to pay upfront and just get them off the books, but, and then that leaves forty-one percent of the costs funded by, let's see, yet tax related, which we were talking about, another agenda item today. So about fifty-nine percent of our total cost funded by other dollars other than our, our tax dollars, which is, I think, pretty good. And so, as I said, I just wanted to make this clear to you guys on the projects, the cost of funding. I'll turn it over to Nick Anhut. These are pillars and associates, our finance, and...
Thank you, Andy. Mayor, members of the council, Nick Anhut, happy that you invited me back to the city. And I've got some...
We always like you coming back, Nick.
On certain days. Have a set of slides here, but nothing new as far as the presentation. We opened bids on behalf of the city this morning on the bonds that Andy just mentioned to fund those two different street and utility projects. The sizing that we were anticipating is about 2.4 million, given what you just saw on that slide. And it was, again, debt structure to be repaid from a combination of the assessments that Andy mentioned, as well as the dedicated tax levy the city puts into effect over a fifteen-year term. On the next slide, you authorized us to go ahead and solicit bids on your behalf. So using a competitive sale process where we go out to the market, we put documents together and bid out the financing to various different broker dealers and underwriters and people that are active in the municipal bond space. In that time as well, we had a discussion with Standard and Poor's. They're a credit rating agency, so they provide a third-party opinion to the marketplace to give the potential bond investors a sense of what kind of risk is involved in their purchasing the city's debt. What's the likelihood that there's going to be a default or anything like that? And I'll, I'll say they thought it was very low. The city has maintained a double A minus credit rating. What does that mean? It's one of the higher credit ratings that they do offer. Triple A would be the highest. And then they have various double A categories underneath that. But it really puts the city on par with the majority of other municipalities across, not just Minnesota, but the entire country. So you'd be in the, in the top half of the median across all other municipalities in the United States and certainly well above other types of corporate finance and things like that as well. So it's generally a very high credit rating. And that gives the investors or the bidders a sense of where they need to price the bond and what kind of interest rate to assign because if they see something as a higher risk, meaning that there might be less likelihood they get fully repaid, they're going to charge a higher interest rate to try to hedge against that potential for non repayment. So we want this credit rating because it results in low interest rates. We got seven bids this morning on behalf of the city. It's a great turnout. Typically, we're getting somewhere in the realm of four to five bids. It really depends on the transaction, how much we're going out to the marketplace, how interested there, those parties are. But a hungry environment right now, and you can see that in the bidding. One thing to note, Baird is the winning bid. They're the lowest interest rate on the transaction. And they're, I know it doesn't seem like much, but it's actually a, a very big spread between themselves and the cover bid from Northland. It's 0.1 percent, so 0.1 percentage point doesn't sound very big, but in our space, that's a, that's a huge amount. So it's a very advantageous bid that you got from Baird. The rest of the bids all kind of spread in, you know, from top to bottom. The differential is 0.18 percentage points, but you see the majority of them cluster in that three to four, 3.4 percent range. So we'll definitely take the low from Baird. It's a great result and, and actually in line with some of the bidding that we saw in some higher rated cities that were out in the market today. So it's, it's a great result for, for Hutchinson. Next slide. So with the low, low result from bid, from Baird, we're able to finalize the debt service costs and the size of the bonds. So delivering on all the funding that Andy just mentioned, the final sizing will be 2,195,000. That'll be the face amount or the principal amount of the bonds. We're able to lower the anticipated amount because Baird included what's called a reoffering premium in their bid. It's kind of the exact opposite of what council member Burnley just mentioned about buying down the interest rate. They're actually buying up their interest payment and they're giving us more money upfront. And so we don't need it for the project, so we're able to just lower how much we're borrowing. So we get to the same exact spot we were in and a lower principal amount, so we have to repay less over the life of the bonds. The final true interest cost calculation came in at 3.3 percent. We were estimating north of four when we started working with Andy and putting this together at the beginning of the summer. Fed has taken action to lower interest rates. We've seen some of the mid to short-term interest rates start to ease and get lower over the course of the start of this fall. And so it's a good timing for the city. And I'll, and I mentioned also, Baird just came out with a, a great bid as well. So, end of the day, our levy projections are about $10,000 favorable than what were anticipated beforehand. So there's a resolution before the council to award the sale of the bonds to the low bidder, Baird, that has been prepared by your bond attorneys at Dorsey. And we certainly recommend that you move on this and award the bid on the basis of the low result in the competitive sale.
Andy, when you sent this out, didn't you say last year's interest rate was 3.32?
The true interest rate, right, yeah. So not too much difference. The one thing I wanted to speak just briefly to on the, on the bond rating, this was the first year since in my time here in fourteen, fifteen years where the rating agency actually talked about what it would take to get us a higher rating instead of talking about things that might give us a downgrade. So that was positive. And then I did speak with Nick a little bit because I did disclose with S and P our potential to issue debt for the fire ladder truck and possibly city center remodel. And it didn't seem to be an issue. It wouldn't impact our, our bond rating. It's, it's a minor enough debt offering, 2 million plus, that, it's not like we're adding the police facility debt at 11 million. That might have an impact. So I think that was one of the council's questions at the last meeting was if it would affect our bond rating.
Yeah, very much so. And we talked about, do we raise the debt? I guess you'd call it debt ceiling. And how would that impact? Because as we're moving forward, we know interest rates are up. We know this is up, this is up. You know, are we, because we haven't raised it in quite a while. I'm not a fan of it, but I'm also not close to it, depending on what it does for the rating or for our rating and what it does for our, you know, future looking out.
So the discussion that we had were those particular projects and borrowing that potential amount. It's a, it's a question that they always raise. Every time we talk about, they want to know what are the kind of the future plans of the community. So Andy did disclose there was consideration of those things, not that it was going to happen, but they did bake it into their analysis, assuming that it would happen. And so, you know, as, as we can see in the report, I'm not sure if you're able to review that, they, they don't see that as any kind of a material risk or changing their opinion at all. Now, obviously, any kind of debt or increased cost burden could have the potential down the road of deteriorating your financial condition, right? So it's always something that you're, you're cognizant of and you have policies and staff and you budget appropriately to address it. And obviously, the track record of Hutchinson has proven such over time that someone like S and P who's evaluating that thinks, you know, you're, you're going to be good for it. So it doesn't pose any kind of risk to, from a credit standpoint.
Any other questions for Nick?
Yeah, Mayor of the Council, the updated resolution was emailed to you and is on your desk tonight to reflect the bid results.
Motion to approve 15912.
I'll second it.
Second by Chad to approve the resolution. Any other discussion? Home favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I guess I'll be back someday. Thank you all.
Thanks, Nick. Resolution number 15909 approving the 2026 HRA preliminary tax levy.
All right, we're going to have three agenda items here related to our preliminary tax levies. And just a reminder to council and to the audience, we're required to certify preliminary levies to the county by the end of September. So that's why we're here tonight to set those levies via resolution, and then I will send them over to the county tomorrow. The HRA is our first levy. It's a special taxing district, and as such, there's a statutory levy limit associated with it. And shading in green is the, is the calculation coming up with that, with that levy limit. And it's based on the estimated market value of the city, which is just under 1.58 billion of estimated market value for 2025. So the calculation arrives at a, a maximum levy for the HRA of 292,282. However, the HRA board is requesting only 173,000 to support its 2026 operations. So that does reflect about a 1.8% increase over their 2025 levy. And with that said, I'll open it up to any questions or comments. And if, if there are none, I ask that you set the preliminary levy for the HRA at 173,000.
Questions?
Done.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve resolution number 15909. Any other discussion? Home favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution number 15910 approving the 2026 EDA preliminary tax levy.
All right. Similar to the HRA, the EDA is a special taxing district as well, so it also has a levy limit in place by state statutes. And again, I've highlighted that in green. The maximum levy based on the estimated market value of the city is 286,437. And that's what the EDA board is requesting for their operations of 2026. And that represents a 1.7% increase over their 2025 levy amount. So with that said, I'll open it up to questions, comments. And if none, I ask that you approve the preliminary levy at 286,437.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve the EDA tax levy. Any other discussion? Home favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks. For papers, Andy, you're going to be standing there for a while yet.
My back's getting sore.
Resolution number 15911 approving the 2026 general fund and debt service preliminary tax levy.
Okay, so the two levies we just spoke about, the EDA and HRA, those show up separately on the tax statements you guys pay as property owners. This next levy is a combination of the general fund, which is the main operations of the city, and then our debt tax levy, which we just talked about with our, our bond issuance. So the debt tax levy repays all the debt service on our various bond issuances. So this levy shows up on the tax statements as the city of Hutchinson levy, just so people know. So again, two components, the general fund tax levy does include 25,000 of tax abatement subsidy that was awarded to Upanor. So that brings, with that included, it brings our general fund tax levy to a total of 7,488,195. And then you can see below that, the various bond funds that we have with debt service still applying. Majority are special assessment bonds, but we do have some other bonds, GO bonds related to the facility at the PD, some tax abatement bonds, and then some street reconstruction bonds. So in total, our debt levy needed for making our debt service payments in 2026 totals 2,645,746. And then that brings our total preliminary tax levy, including that general fund levy, that brings a total to 10,133,941. And I should have mentioned, this, this is exactly the same as Matt Yonik had presented at the last budget workshop, so there have been no changes up to this point. This is more of a summary look. Maybe it's easier to see it in comparison to the previous year. The levy we're talking about right now is highlighted in the red font. You can see it's increasing about 9.2% over 2025. It's an 857,000 dollar increase. General fund is the big reason behind the, behind the increase, 11.3%, where the debt funds are increasing about 3.9%. And Matt did a good job going through the detail. I won't go through too much here tonight on, on the reasons behind the general fund increase, but mainly it comes down to our, our wages benefits in a new position or two. Matt showed this as well at that workshop. It basically shows the impact the tax levies have on the median home value. And we show different scenarios. I won't go through, through in detail, but the one I'll point out is, is the inflationary increase, which I think is, that column right there. If we were to keep up with inflation, about a 2.9% increase in the CPI, that would amount to about a 2.9% overall city tax levy, but we would have to cut about 588,000 out of our budget. Either cut expenditures or find new revenue. Either way, we'd have to find about 3.5% of our current budget to achieve that levy. The one we're focusing on tonight is shading in green. You can see it's a 9.2% overall increase. Our tax rate is going to go up. It's going to go up about 3.6%. And then down in the bottom, you can see the impact on that median, median home value would be about an additional 92 of city tax paid in 2026. The debt, debt management levy, you can see in those early years, our levy is slowly ramping up. I believe it's about a two and a half percent average increase until we reach about 2.9 million. And that ramp up is essentially due to, including the new debt for the police station. I know we showed this in detail at the last workshop, so I didn't want to go into too much detail. Just showing you and reminding you, the debt levy will be increasing over the next few years as well. So what's next? Staff is going to continue working on the final budgets. We're going to look at revenue increases based on, on fee schedule increases proposed by the various departments. So there may be potential for new revenue to be added to the budget and help our cause. And we're going to hold the truth and taxation hearing in early December, and then we'll come back and set our final levies at the end of December. And just a reminder, the final levy can't be higher than what you set here tonight for the preliminary levy. So with that said, I'll open it up to any questions or comments you may have. And then ultimately, we'll need to set the preliminary tax levy either at the amount recommended here or another amount that council feels appropriate.
Any questions for Andy?
Well, this is setting the high bar until we review the complete budget.
Correct.
And look at, do we need to make cuts? Do we need to, you know, where do we need to trim?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make that.
Yeah. I would say, I think Matt pointed this out at the last workshop, too. We're, we're in, the budgets... We're in, the budget's at a further point now than it ever has been in other years, because we typically have our meetings with the directors after we set the preliminary levy. We have those meetings before the preliminary levy, just to get this to a more reasonable level, I guess you could say.
Well, it's strange, because I'm talking to people about property taxes versus user fees, and I'm getting the, our property taxes are maxed. We need to start charging people for using what the services that they're using. And that, that's why I'm being a little bit hesitant, but I, I said that last meeting, I'd like to see the numbers on user, you know, the using. And that'll give a good direction with how we can close some of that gap.
Yeah. I know I don't have data for you tonight to look at, but talking with peers, they're all looking at double-digit increases, too. I know that doesn't help here in Hutch, because, you know, we're used to a fairly moderate tax levy, but it's not out of the ordinary from what I'm seeing right now.
I'm just watching the news, a lot of communities around are looking, like Andy said, double-digit.
Yeah.
Seeing one as high as 19%.
I'd make a motion to approve the preliminary budget as presented.
I'll second it.
Preliminary levy, I'm sorry.
Motion by Chad, second by myself to set the preliminary tax levy. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Contract with Exxon Enterprises Incorporated for the Hutchinson Police Services Officer Safety Plan, Fleet Cameras, and License Plate Readers.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I have the pleasure of bringing this contract before you after Andy's presentation, so I'm not real happy about that.
You can put those numbers.
So what we have before us tonight are actually two different quotes, but one entire package. Exxon Enterprises provides us with our tasers, our body cameras, our fleet cameras, some newer technology that we're going to be acquiring, which is virtual reality training for people in crisis, that type of thing. So it's a more reality-based training than we've ever had before, which is something that we've been working towards for the last couple of years. Some of this, some of that training is coming out of public safety dollars that were awarded in '24, I believe. This is a little bit unique in the fact that, to my knowledge, the city normally doesn't enter into a 10-year contract for anything, but we're recommending that that be done in this case. Their business model, and they're happy to disclose this to us, is an 8% to 10% markup every year. So by going with a 10-year contract, we're locking in our prices for that period of time. They also, our current contract with them doesn't expire until the end of next year, so they agreed to honor our current contract pricing, but get us new technology under that for the first year. So that's significant savings to the city as well. Ultimately, the first year of the TASER body camera, fleet camera contract would be due at January 2026, and that's 80, I think, 86,000 roughly. And then every year after that through 2035, $112,000, yeah, 500, 112, 500, let's try it, 112,510 per year. Ultimately, that's what it is. Exxon pretty much has the market wrapped up with this type of technology. We've been using Exxon for the last 10 years, or nine years, with no complaints. They have great customer service, so I would recommend you guys okaying the signing of that contract. Also, the second part of it is some new technology. It's called outpost, and what it is, is license, stationary license plate readers. That would be affixed to posts throughout the city, four different places throughout the cities, usually on the points of ingress and egress. So in the event of a crime or where, maybe an Amber Alert or something like that, if that plate comes into our city, it notifies us right away which camera that it passed, and can usually give us a direction to travel as well. It also helps with warrants and wanted people, that type of thing. That price tag is much less. For first year, just 2026, there would be no charge for that, and then it would be approximately $12,000 annually after that through 2035 as well. So I bring that before you, and we recommend approval, but obviously, that decision's up to you.
Tom, on top of this, too, don't they do the storage for all of the data?
Yep. Yeah, I forgot to mention that. So all of our evidence storage is through Exxon, and that's part of this quote as well, all of our digital evidence, and all of our transcription, that type of thing, is all through them as well.
That license plate reader that's included in that $112,000 going forward, versus that over and above?
That would be a different contract, so there's two contracts. The $112,000 is for virtually everything else, and then $12,000 annually after 2026 for the next nine years for the license plate reader technology.
Chief, what, do you have a, maybe add to this, too? What is the potential impact to your budget for the police, a percentage?
I guess I would have to take a, probably less than 2%, 3% probably. I mean, we're a $4 million budget, and we're paying, regardless, we'll end up paying $86,000 annually, so the 112 would be, you know, 4, $30,000 annually probably on a $4 million budget.
Chief, for that license plate reader, does anybody else have? Is that a real good asset to have?
We're, we're kind of on an island right now. Everybody to our west, like Candy, Ojai County, even smaller agencies, Montevideo, I guess Wilmer obviously has, and then if you happen to drive Highway 7 at all, and you get to that St. Bonnie Minatrista, large apartment building.
Yep.
Complex, and that roundabout right there, there's two cameras in that roundabout.
It's actually quite, we'll say normal, but it's, it's a fairly used or common.
Yeah.
Piece of technology.
Yeah, we've been looking at it for a couple of years. The previous company that Exxon partnered with, they're called Flock Safety, they primarily have, I should say, they have the majority of these systems out there. Exxon broke, broke away from Flock or had a disagreement with them and developed their own technology that essentially does the same thing. And this is, it's shared information, so if you're on the system, it shares that information with all the other subscribers in the nation. And it literally returns information simultaneous. I mean, it comes through, and as soon as it goes through, it's millions of plates a year, probably just in the City of Hutchinson that it would read. We currently have that technology now, I would say. It's just not on fixed. So as part of our fleet cameras, we have license plate readers now, and it's responsible for numerous arrests, for warrants and that type of thing, revolt drivers, suspended licenses, that type of thing.
Well, I've always been a pro, I mean, public service and public safety is our number one.
Yeah.
Responsibility here on the council, in my opinion. So I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Tim, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
First reading of ordinance 25-861, ordinance to rezone property at 955 Gulf Course Road Northwest.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. This one should be a little easier, I'm not asking for any money tonight, so.
That's one shot to begin.
So what we're looking at here this evening is the first reading of ordinance to rezone the property up at 955 Gulf Course Road Northwest. The Bullard property earlier this evening, on the consent agenda, we got a site plan approval for that, and what's looking to go in up there if this property is rezoned is a 20-unit memory care facility. And we had a public hearing with the planning commissioner, we could go tonight, had some resident questions on that, but it seems like as plans come together, this could be something that would be a good fit for that property. With that being said, there aren't any questions from the council, staff would recommend approval of the first ordinance to rezone.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve first reading. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. First reading of ordinance 25-862, ordinance to rezone property at Elks Ridge Estates.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this one was, should have been done with the final plat that we had here about a month ago or more with Elks Ridge Estates. Kind of slipped through the cracks, both on city staff's end and on the developer's end. So what we're doing here this evening is just asking for that rezoning that we talked about during that whole plating process, to rezone that property to R3, which would accommodate the type of homes that is being proposed and currently being built on that Elks Ridge Estates property.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Tim, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. First reading of ordinance number 25.
Go ahead. Go ahead, sorry.
Are you sure? Ordinance number 25-863, ordinance granting MediaCom Minnesota LLC a franchise extension.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and council members. Actually, this item and the following item are essentially the same, except you're just gonna be switching the names of the providers. So both MediaCom and Nuvera have franchise agreements with the City of Hutchinson to provide cable TV services in town. We had long-term agreements with both of those providers, however, those agreements expired on August 31st of this year. The city has retained a specialized attorney to renegotiate those agreements, and they started those renegotiations earlier in 2025, but they weren't completed by the August 31st date. So what's in front of you tonight is ordinances to extend those current agreements by three months till the end of the year. Our attorney is assuring us that they will be ready for your approval by that time. However, as I mentioned in the council memo, HCVN gets its payments through these providers, through their subscription fees to their customers, and so in order to make sure that HCVN can continue to get their funding for the next three months, it's important that these extensions be approved, and so I'm asking you to do that.
What's the holdup that didn't get negotiated?
I think there's some discussions about changes in technology, so the Nuvera agreement actually was entered into 10 years ago, and the MediaCom was 15 years ago. And so as you can imagine, in that length of time, technology has changed primarily through wireless communications and providing of computer services, internet services that weren't contemplated in these original agreements. So my understanding is the negotiations are centering around those, and I've had some meetings with HCVN personnel about them, of course, wanting to increase their revenue, and so I know our attorney's trying to work on that as well.
So MediaCom and Nuvera want more money from us?
No. Nope, it's the other way around. So HCVN depends on.
Gotcha.
The payments from these two providers to fund their operations, and so we're trying our best to try to get them that.
Don't think it's anything that's contentious, it's just taking some time. Thanks.
I make a motion to approve it.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. First reading of ordinance 25-864, ordinance granting New Home Telecom Incorporated a franchise extension.
So you make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Tim. Second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Setting annual city recognition event for November 6, 2025, at 5:30 PM at the Hutchinson Event Center.
Self-explanatory, I'm currently preparing my dad jokes for this.
Well, I was just gonna say that you put this on pretty early.
Yeah, I don't.
Work on your bad dad jokes.
My bad jokes, so I gotta get ready for that, so.
Is this enough time?
Yes, yes.
I also want to note, that's the delivery day for the Rotary Rose fundraiser, so if you really want to make a special night for your family.
Family?
You know, and take your wife to this event, or his husband, you know, you could really make it special, the rose delivery and the fundraisers, so.
Awesome, so I planned it perfectly.
Big day.
Big night.
Big night on the town.
Wow.
And make a motion to set that event.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to set that event. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Rescheduling November 11th, 2025 city council meeting.
Mayor Council, our first meeting in November is on November 11th, which is a holiday, and so we cannot conduct business on that day, so we need to look to reschedule that. The Monday is a school board meeting, and so the request would be either that Wednesday, the 12th, or Thursday, 13th. The staff's recommendation is Wednesday, the 12th, but we're open for, we want to get this scheduled now, just so if there's any needs for public hearings, or if we have any procedural things, that staff know at least when that meeting will take place.
I make a motion to move it to the 12th.
I'll second it. Motion by Chad, second by myself to set that meeting for the 12th of November. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Setting truth and taxation hearing for December 4th, 2025, at 6:00 PM.
As Andy noted, we approved our preliminary levies. As a part of the processes this time of year, we also need to set our public hearing, so when the county sends out those tax notices, they also include when those public hearing dates would be. Usually, we have it the Tuesday, either Tuesday or Thursday. This year, the county board is having theirs on December 2nd, and so that's why we look to move it to Thursday, the 4th, at 6 o'clock.
Make a motion to set that hearing.
Make a motion to set that hearing.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to set that for December fourth. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We have the Hutchinson Housing and Rede Development Authority Board minutes from May twentieth, June seventeenth, July seventeenth, and August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Planning Commission minutes from August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. City of Hutchinson financial report and investment report for August of two thousand twenty-five. Mike, you got anything for us tonight? Say, I had somebody ask me about the striping on Dale. Is there, is there a crosswalk that's not marked on there yet?
If everything's done, that wasn't ended. You know, any intersection? Question.
I thought he said Dale and Sentry, but I, I thought that was, that would be right by Hanson gravel, correct?
Dale is south grade.
Or south grade, yeah.
That's all marked at this point. Then, you know, I've been seeing the construction system, so that's marked. I'll check though, but I'm not aware of anything that hasn't been completed.
Because Dale and Sentry is way on that end, right?
We didn't, we didn't do any work down there.
Yeah. He just asked, I don't know, he said that the buses come and they pick kids up there, but I hardly think there's any kids up right around that area, but I don't know.
We had, you know, short of the projects, other contractors that did much striping, much striping, turnarounds, everything that has been completed out of the park hundreds of years ago.
Okay.
Center Lions, everything at this point, so.
I'm sure if I don't remember right, he's gonna come back and.
It's not true, again, say we had something that was crap, but everything's completed down there.
All right, thanks, Mike. Chief Kipperston, you got anything for us?
You were there, thank you.
Andy, you got anything for us else?
I do, yeah, thank you.
I already marked. You got anything?
Nothing.
Man.
I actually don't have any idea.
Oh, my gosh. Chad, let's start with you.
I don't have anything extra.
Tim.
I'd like the council to, as we move forward, we had discussed sidewalks and new developments. And changing the ordinance or updating that ordinance for sidewalks and new developments. And so I wanted to kind of put that on the radar to see if anybody was still pursuing that.
We need to do it because it doesn't match what, yeah, that's not right right now, so that has to be addressed.
Sure. And also pursuing, and this is probably opening a can of worms, but I usually just open them and dump them out. We're having some problems with post office cluster boxes, and I'd like to set some standards for. And I know we're fighting a system, but we're fighting a system right now that's doing some things that are dangerous. The cluster boxes over, unsure where they're being moved. Because of the danger, there's nowhere for cars to pull over. Cars are going the wrong way. They're putting them by fire hydrants in electrical outlets, and I'd like to at least have some guidance for them as we develop new areas where we don't want a cluster mailbox five feet away from a fire hydrant. Or covering up underground, because right now where they're put, where they want to put one would cover a stormwater sewer area, a light, and a fire hydrant, and we have nowhere, and I'm familiar with, because it's outside our area. The neighbors have complained quite a bit about it because they won't be able to get to the thing. And with the snow in the winter, which nobody's looked at, there's nowhere to put the snow. And we're required as a neighborhood to clean that area, and that would be impossible to do. So I'm looking at, can we look at the city when we're developing, or talking to developers about new streets to get post office? At least talk to the post office, say, where are we putting these cluster boxes? And then being able to do a pull over lane or something to. Last year, I called the post office because I watched a elderly woman get out of her car, and she fell down in traffic because it was icy in front of it. And I've seen that numerous times, and also for putting a crosswalk in areas where those people have to cross the street to get to the post office boxes. So.
You know, and I know Dan's not here. I can't recall if we have anything in our development agreements. Mike, nothing comes to my mind regarding it. I'll just say from staff's experience, this is, I'll just say it, I don't want to try to throw anybody on the bus. Anytime we've tried to work with the post office, the response is, that's fine, we just want to deliver mail then. So I'm not saying this isn't something you can't push. I think you're gonna have to gain the support of the postal service and.
And there's ways of working around that. I, I happened to talk to a congressman the other night who, about this very situation, and they were very interested in making sure that the community was serviced by the post office. So if we can't get it changed at this level, we can go to that level and they can change it. But I think we need to at least have some guidance, or bring up the safety. And we're talking, we talk about safety and that, listen, if we go to them and say, here's some safety things, and we'd like to know these things, how is it hurting to be able to address that issue? I don't think the postal service wants to be sued because somebody fell under a car in the street getting their mail in a box that's improperly placed. We have to remember ADA also has regulations about where those boxes are placed and how they get handicapped people or disabled people can get to them. So, moving forward, I don't think if we set up a new development and they're moving, and we work with that beforehand, and we're actually helping with the, making that, that cluster more safe, why would they be imposed to that?
As a city looking at, if you've done it before, Matt, or, I mean, as a group, we'll go to them. Yeah, it sounds. Faster, whatever. I can do some checking. I know the mailbox cluster isn't a new thing. It's, I think, probably more and more of a requirement in, in communities. I mean, I think the days of having a mailbox right next to your property are, aren't there. Mike, I know you, you know, some conversations recently on this.
Few things. This whole issue came up because of residents' safety, a petition from the residents of that neighborhood, and that's why the whole issue was even brought up and discussed with the post office. So, because the concern was they're so tightly clustered, it brought everybody to one area, and so the thought was distribute them more appropriately throughout the neighborhood. So between public works staff, the post office itself, serviceability, snow. I, I'm not aware of any additional issues that have been created. I mean, they were pretty, pretty thought through in terms of the locations itself. So what I am aware of are folks that don't necessarily want a mailbox now put in their front yard in the city right of way. I understand that part of it, but I, some of the other issues to me feel a little bit overblown, quite honestly, because I, I've not seen them. But the location poses, I've not seen some of those issues compared to what we are experiencing now. So happy to take a look at, and we'll probably hit pause at this point, so.
I have photos for you with cars parked there, and quite frankly, if they, if cars park fifteen feet from the hydrant, which is legal, and it's at the end of a driveway, you're gonna have to stop in the middle of the street or parallel park to get your mail. And the interesting part is right across the street is fifty yards of nothing. So, I, I have the photos, I can explain it to you.
Yeah, sure, we'll certainly take.
And I have no skin in the game, it's not my, I mean, it's the, I've seen too many things at the other cluster box where I've seen people park the wrong way, cars almost hitting each other, people falling down trying to get to them. And we need to address it, because the post office ultimately, yeah, you're not gonna be able to deliver the mail because people are gonna die trying to get it.
Correctly, yeah. Couple of things. You know, I appreciate the residents reaching out to elective officials. I know, Mike, you've had this recent one. Been here ten years, first time I've heard of safety concerns with cluster boxes. And so I'm just being upfront, and so it's, it's kind of some of a reaction from the city. Secondly, we've generally taken the position, I just want the council to be aware of this, that we've given the post office the use of the right of way to put mailboxes in. And so what's generally been a post office issue, what we're being told is now needs to become an issue of the city to address. And we can do that, but I'm just, I'm just showing, I'm explaining now is that what generally has not been something we've stepped into, we are now going to be doing that.
One way I'm looking at is more the moving forward into new developments. Because the, if you're doing a new development, you look at it and go, where would the potential be for cluster boxes? If we're working with the post office, discussing them before a development, and we'd like them here, and we'd like them here. Then we could possibly put the crosswalk in. I mean, as simple as that, but at least we're increasing the public safety.
Yeah, I can certainly, will involve Dan, you know, in terms of the history of those. You know, again, I think the issues probably come more to the forefront now that it's almost built out. You know, for years, it likely served the neighborhood well, but now that you have a greater concentration of traffic there and people, so it led to the issues. Kind of a two-part. It was the speed up Denver and the location of the mailboxes. So it's kind of a two-part in terms of what the petition tried to address.
And I'll just say, and we've already, I've already started experiencing this week now with this request, I don't want it in front of my home. As we all know, there's homes on both sides of the road, and it's gonna have to go somewhere, so.
Remember when we used to have mailboxes in our house?
Yep, yep. Yes, we can at least, we can, we can look into potentially with some regulation or some guidelines. Could be, you know, some of this, like I said, it's, okay, would we address it in developers' agreements? Is it more of a citywide? We could look at some of those options. I think the other thing regarding the sidewalks, is there a timeframe you want that addressed by? Because that at least helps in, in working with. I think sooner than later. Sure. Kind of, I think this is kind of, the issue that came, brought this to the forefront. Had we done our due diligence, we would have saw that, we wouldn't have had to go through that, is what I'm saying. The fact that it was a thoroughfare, or whatever the terminology is. True. So it's like, if we haven't done anything, and that was, before the end of the year, it'll be eight months ago. Then, that was not done well on our part. Sure, sure. Yep, and I think that's, I think generally that will start at the planning commission and then make its way up as a recommendation to the.
It doesn't look like a very hard thing to just.
No, I think that, well, I'm gonna say this, from talking with Dan, I think a planning commission has a different perspective on sidewalks than the city council does. So I just, I think the council needs to, to be aware of that, so if there's not specific direction from the council, you may get that from the, the planning commission, which is not fine, or which is fine. On top of that, as I've shared, we're dealing with six developments right now. So I think staff has been wrapped up in, in trying to work with those, you know, five or six developments.
Understand, it comes down to a disability issue. It comes down to a safety issue again.
But I, I appreciate that direction, because I think that's been an easy conversation with, with, with myself, with Dan, and probably Mike. Is, okay, it's something we need to get addressed by the end of the year, so we need to start working on that. And at the very least, the council knows, it's bills into next year, at least we know, it's in the hot burns moving forward, so.
Thank you, that's all I got.
That's it?
Thanks, Mike.
I've been driving too much. You give me way too much time to think.
Do we come back to you?
No, I'm good.
Call you Columbo? Oh, one more thing? Yeah.
We're fine. Go ahead, Matt, do your job.
Dave, what do you got?
MMDC quarterly meeting was a week ago tomorrow, and there was about thirty people that were present at that meeting. A lot of commissioners and new commissioners, and people that are developing and do a couple of different jobs there, but things are looking up. The money that we lend out, or they lend out, I think we have thirty-two loans out, and every one of them are up to date with their payments. And some of them have early paid their, with the old, which has put, I think, just about nine hundred thousand dollars back in the budget that we can loan out again. So, the, the theory is, is that we get money back, we can loan it out again. So people that are stuck somewhere, can't get quite enough money from a bank, or whatever they, they call it, some kind of interest. But anyway, it's a, it's a source to go and get help out with your lending, with your loans, so. But other than that, yeah, and today was a meeting, but unfortunately I was in a car driving down the road, so I didn't get in on that one. But that would have been the transportation committee, subcommittee, and it's getting more weird about every day, so. You either have enough drivers, don't have enough drivers, you got too many vehicles, or you got whatever. They're working on it, and maybe one day in our near future, things will come this way and mesh, and then everyone will be satisfied with everything that's going on, so. But it's been a while, I have.
Thanks, Dave. Pat?
We had a pedestrian bike meeting last Wednesday, and on the agenda is Wednesday, October eighth, parking, or walking bike to school. And it's parked on Main Street, it's from seven forty-five to eight forty-five. There's three different locations where you can.
Three different routes?
Yeah, you go with the kids, and, and then the other thing we talked about is we're supposed to be lighting down along the Pearl River by East Square, but you have not gotten at it, and it's gotta be hardwired, it can't be solar, you go to all the trees and everything. So hopefully they get it done this fall, so. And then we had a wage trading meeting Monday, and Chad looked okay there. We kind of approved the plan here for wages this year. Have another meeting coming up before the final year-end decision, but that's what I got.
Pat, do you want, I know, I think Lynn said you guys at the, at the pedestrian committee, you guys have talked about signage, correct, regarding, maybe you ought to address that, just the conversations you guys have had, so.
The issue that came up before us, thanks, Matt, is about the use of just bicycles, the motorized scooters, electric bikes on Main Street. And Mike was there, and we're gonna get some better signage. We kind of currently just have one on the south end by the post office. And we'll be addressing both ends, and it's an ongoing concern that that's kind of a moving target, is the e-bikes, the scooters get more popular. But right now, you know, there are specific rules in regards, so I believe the scooters are twelve years old and they have to have a helmet. The e-bikes, I think, are fifteen, Chad, does that sound right? And so, I mean, there are specific state rules and guidelines we can go by, but, yeah, just to make them aware that they're not supposed to be on Main Street. So, yeah, Dan, that's a work in progress. It'll be taken care of as quick as we can get some new signage done.
Well, Matt kind of stole my thunder here, because, yeah, I know if I go home and she'll ask me if I brought it up again, but is there anything with education about that? To the schools?
You know, the one thing we talked about addressing too was to go to the retailers in town, and Chad, I'm sure, is well-versed, but like Target, Walmart, and give them the guidelines that are actually state guidelines, you know, that'll say, hey, if you're buying this, if they wouldn't let us, I don't know if they would have asked literally permission at Walmart, at, at Target, assign posted by where they have those little scooters and the electric bikes. This is the state statute, so if you're buying this for your child, which people want to do that, but then they just don't know, okay, if my kid's under twelve, we can't be on that thing, really. I mean, in their own property, absolutely, but I mean.
There were some.
I would clarify it. I don't know if we can do that, Matt.
Yeah, I don't know. That might be a voluntary thing, if they would, somewhat, we, somewhat, I was, there was some emails exchanged with staff about, there's communities that have posted stuff like on their website about just some of these rules in the states. And so we've talked about, I think, part of that conversation of maybe looking to have the city do that, and then get something out in the billing, or that kind of, that kind of highlights all of those requirements.
Well, I know one time when you posted that, all of a sudden, it was a good old Real Life on Huts, there was just a ton of people. You'd have thought you were chopping their arms off. And I mean, it was just things that are already on the books. It was nothing that we were proposing to be stricter, it was just things that.
Yeah, I, I, well, as we've seen, I, I'm sure ninety-nine percent of the public have no clue those laws are already.
Right, right. Chief Kipperston, do they have any literature on e-bikes that we could get, or that could get passed out? Do you know of any?
I'm sure we can find some, I'm sure there is. I haven't really.
That's, and I think we, I think there needs to be a distinction here, because. That's, and I think we, I think there needs to be a distinction here because we mention a lot of times e-bikes. That's not the, the big problem. It's the scooters, which is a, and the motorized scooters, which is more of the thing, issue than the technically the, the e-bikes, so.
Unfortunately, if you had a Venn diagram of the people raising hell with e-things and, yeah, people reading education, they're not gonna touch.
Those two circles don't mean.
But, so we, I guess, we have talked about trying to get information out. Like I said, I think, Pat, you make the good point, because I saw some of that. All we did was try to educate the public and we were eviscerated for.
It was like, holy.
We're just sharing, these are rules that are already in place, so.
You know, opening a can of worms, it was like, wow. At least they paid attention to it, I guess.
You know, like you, you know, like we mentioned, you know, unfortunately, we're gonna have somebody get hurt really bad.
That's the main concern, you know, they're so darn quick, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's a work in progress, we're not, it's not falling on deaf ears.
When you're going on South Grade Road and somebody's down on the trail and all of a sudden they're pulling away from you.
That's it for me.
And, and, okay. Well, let's go home.
Motion adjourned, second.
Somebody, Pat, second by Chad to adjourn. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
People say nay. Motion carries. Good evening, everyone.